We have a quorum? Yeah, it's free to do.
Okay, good to go, Joe.
Okay, good afternoon. My name's Joe Stranowski. I'm Chair of the Rockport Planning Board, and we have a quorum today. So I am going to call this meeting to order on August 24th at 5:31 PM. First thing before we go any further is I'd like to seat Scott Gazelle, who's an alternate, as a full voting member this evening. So Scott will be voting. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. I will go through my full opening ceremonies that I usually do since we have a pretty simple meeting here this evening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to look at and approve two findings of facts and conclusions of law for the previous meeting in July. And given the fact that this meeting is just looking at those two finding of facts, we will not be accepting public comment because we're basically just examining those finding of facts to make sure we've documented the previous findings that we stated in the July meeting. So there's no additional public comment that's being accepted on these two items. Okay, so with that, looking at the agenda, item two on the agenda is finding of facts in law regarding the final site plan revision for the new fire station located at 624 West Street in Rockport and identified as MAP 18 lot 79 in the 906th district. And the property is owned by the town of Rockport. So I'm sure that everyone has had an opportunity to review those finding of facts online. I know there were some comments in there. Ryan, maybe you want to go ahead and put up that attachment if you could, the finding of facts.
Can everybody see it?
Yes. There it is. I got it. Okay, does this show changes on it, what you're displaying right now?
Yeah, there's a couple.
Okay, okay, very good. So I'll just run through this quickly, maybe by page. Is it paginated? Is it paginated, or is it just continuous flow? It is. Okay, that's good. Okay, so let's look at page one first, whether you look at your own copy or you look at the copy that is displayed here. A couple of comments there on page one. Any questions or anybody want to challenge any of the comments there? Looks like mostly grammatical changes there.
Except for the identification of Amanda and Bill.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
No, I also had just a quick comment, the approved on. Do we need to specify that that was approved by the planning board, or?
No. I mean, so this, this style of documenting, it's kind of interesting that, you know, it's a town project and, you know, it was voted on by the voters to fund it.
So it's all assumed here that it's planning board?
It's all planning board.
Okay, cool.
Just FYI, I cannot see the whole page when you're sharing here.
Neither can I.
Yeah, I zoomed in to make it. What do you, what do you?
Well, I can't see the second half of the page.
Okay, why don't you, yeah, why don't you leave it bigger and scroll down?
So are we done with this approved on?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question for the group, and it's for both of these, and I should have probably asked this before. Should we identify the planning board members somewhere in the header?
I barely hear you.
Does anyone else hear me?
I could.
Okay, I was just asking if we should identify the planning board members present in the beginning matter?
Yeah, so the model that I've gone off of in the May municipal association, it didn't utilize that, didn't call them out, and we can, it doesn't particularly matter one way or another.
So the planning board members are named on the minutes of the meeting, and so how do these two documents relate?
The minutes are just your informative, it's just the informative document to showcase who was there, what was there, and a general assumption or a general summation of what was discussed. And then the findings, facts, and conclusions of law, that's the detailed bits that ride with the project in the event it goes to court.
Okay, so then to Jeff's point, this probably should be a standalone document. We probably should include the board members present and absent.
Okay. I can add that. Do you want to, anything at the top?
Sure, that'd be fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I will do that. Do we need to discuss this comment here?
I have a, I have a a comment, the ADA toilet room that's up. I have no idea what that means, you know, and what is involved there. It just seems like a strange phrase.
Americans with Disability Association.
No, 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 Americans with Disability Act, I understand that. So the two office spaces are proposed to be added, which amended the ADA toilet room and the meeting room. So you mean the two spaces, the two, there are two more, there was a toilet room and a meeting room, and now there's a toilet room, a meeting room, and two offices?
Correct.
Is that what's going on? Okay, so amended is not amended is not the right word.
Well, that was the word that they used. I mean, if you want to change it to something that's more suitable, go for it.
Well, does anybody, is anybody else having the same?
That's a little bit awkward. Go ahead, Rob.
This seems like in the context of the previous plan. So to me, to me, it makes sense. I'm assuming the toilet room and the meeting room were changed because of these two additional offices?
Correct.
All right.
It's a little bit awkward, but I guess it states what the case is.
All right, if people are happy with it, I'm.
You could just change the word amended to modified in the.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, yeah, okay, yes, I'm happier with that. Thank you.
Okay, what are we, the bottom page two there?
Yes.
Okay, go on, page three. I think it's three. Okay. Yeah, let's stay there. Okay, with 1300, 1300, go on to 1305. A few comments there.
I just wanted to know if lots is a technical term? Six parking lots, as opposed to six parking spaces?
Yeah, spaces and lots are two different things.
That's what I think. It says lots in the document. I don't know whether that's.
It should be parking spaces, Jan.
Well, that's what I think, yes. But I didn't know whether maybe perhaps, because this was written by somebody who knows more about this than I do, perhaps lots is the technical term. Does anybody?
It was, they mentioned lots, and that's what I wrote down.
Okay, well, I think spaces is better.
Okay, the only thing on that, whoops, move, moved. I was gonna say the only thing on that second to last paragraph there, "The board, through discussion with the applicants, found that the existing parking would suffice if large public meetings were not held." Going back and reviewing the video, Bill Lane did state, which might be relevant, "The town does not plan to open the West Rockport Fire Station for large public meetings. The room will be used primarily by fire staff for small meetings." So I don't know if that's relevant or not.
We can add that.
It just, just supports the intent.
Yes.
Well, we, and we supplied a condition that if large meetings were planned, the fire chief would take control and decide.
Correct.
What would happen.
So Ryan, I'll read it one more time. "The town does not plan to open the West Rockport Fire Station for large public meetings." Period. "The room will primarily be used by fire staff for small meetings." And so you make that a quote, or I don't know what you, that's what Bill Lane said. How are you gonna word that there? Okay, Bill Lane stated, okay. Okay. Okay, so we're down on the board motion to add this as condition of the site plan.
Okay, and motioned, could we, could we change that to voted? I mean, motioned is a kind of word that we don't typically use. The board voted to add this as a condition.
Yes. Better choice.
Okay. All right, can we go down to findings? "Word finds based on revisions proposed." 1300 was satisfied, okay.
And then in there too.
So you can do the same thing there, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, since there's no changes there, why don't you go down to findings? So Tom, is that just a comment in general, or did you want to do something there?
Well, it's, it's a comment, but in reading over these findings of fact and conclusions of law, it seems to me we have the findings, and then we repeat the findings in the conclusion. What is, what am I missing here? They seem to be the same, almost.
Yeah, so like this bit up here, I'll just use this as an example, all of these 800s, these are findings, you know, and then this is like a summation, this is your statement, you know, if there's something in the home occupation that you wanted to elaborate more, a little bit more. So if someone's reading through this, they don't have to read everything, they just go straight to this findings and say, okay, this is satisfactory, and they concluded it's satisfactory, and then they can move forward with it. I get what you're saying, Tom, I do, and can fluff it up a little bit, but I don't know how much more we could go.
Well, you know, I'm not sure what we're, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing here. So we have the findings.
I think this is legalese, and we are bound to it. Elegance is not entered into it.
Elegance definitely doesn't enter into it, and there's some wiggle room on how we do this. This is just a model that I've gone off of. And like I said before, and when we started this, this findings of facts document, it will morph into what Rockport really wants its findings of facts to be. So open to suggestions on how we could handle it. So if you have thoughts, Tom, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, it just, it just seemed to me, every time I, every time I found findings and conclusions, the findings were one thing, and then the conclusions just repeated it. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is, it just, it seems awkward.
Just try to rationalize what I think I see. It looks like the findings just state all the detailed data, and then the conclusion is almost the summary that we voted on it, and it's compliant.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not an attorney.
I think we just live with it.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's not, it's not unique to this. Why don't we drive on with this one? If we want to over the long term here, look at the format changes we've.
Actually, you know, if I think about this one, the findings, the board finds based on the revision proposed that the requirements of section 800 have been satisfied, and then conclusions, the board doesn't have to say based on the findings. The board can just say section 800 is, we, the board moved to approve, I don't know, I'd have to think about.
The, the one, the one that I will say we can have wiggle room on is the finding section. I do know that the conclusion, that one has to be worded in a way that the, that the board concluded based on the findings, and we can say something specific when that, but it does, it does have to say that the board concluded based on the findings, and then a little bit more after that.
Okay, well, it's not, it's not a huge deal. I get it.
Why don't we just ask, ask our lawyer if we could just go to conclusions and not put in the sentence about the findings, that the conclusion says based on the findings, if we could just have one sentence there. Just ask the attorney.
I already have in like creating these, because I had the same concern, and he said he agrees, it's like, kind of annoying, but the findings and the conclusions, these, this right here is like the most important bit, and then this right here backs up the findings. So, and this example is a very like weird example, in that we're doing the findings of facts and conclusions of law on a revision to a plan that we approved before we did findings, facts, and conclusions of law. So it's, it's a weird one.
Yeah, I guess I would also hesitate to change it, because there could be examples where we would need both findings and conclusions, and we might be shooting itself in the fight.
Okay, so let's for this evening, let's go with what we've got for format here. Let's drive on.
I'm just gonna enter this down a little bit, so we can get it all on one page.
Okay, so we got a few changes here. Okay, all right with the final motion? And the changes that are there.
I liked it better the way it was. But I don't care. It's, it is clear, and that's fine.
You shouldn't say if a meeting was, if it's a supposition.
Why not?
If it's something that doesn't yet exist, then it's if a meeting were to be held, not if a meeting was to be held, because that's past tense.
If a meeting is planned at this location?
Or you can say if a meeting is held, in other words, when a meeting is held, or if a meeting is held, and the parking needs exceed what is on the property, then the fire chief will make arrangements for additional parking. That's all future tense.
That's all fine. Yep. Better.
Then, so in the appendix, I attach all relevant information and anything that went into the decision of that, of this meeting. So that's what would be included in the appendix.
And what was, what was that? Just the drawings and the application?
Yep, just the application, and, you know, for, for a normal sense, it would be anything that was discussed before. So anything that rides with it, and there was an example before of a previous findings that was included in it as well. So it can get pretty dense, but the whole point of me doing this is I spent way too much time trying to find stuff for the hotel appeal. So if there's ever an appeal, I can pull one file and go, and we don't have to spend time and money.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you need us to come by the office and sign this paper?
Well, that's what we're about to get into. So y'all gotta do a vote to approve all of these amendments?
Yes.
And finalize it.
Okay, and then you go on, you're gonna say that we're gonna vote to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board?
Correct.
Is everybody gonna vote?
So we can do it either way. You can have to be, everybody votes to have the chair sign, and then that rides, or everybody can come in and put a signature down.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and vote to approve it, or let's vote on the approval of it. So all of those in favor of approving the finding of facts on the West Rockport Fire Station as amended? Say aye with a hand vote?
Aye.
Aye. Hand vote, please, yeah. Okay, so I see one, two, three, four. Rob? Rob?
Have I frozen?
Okay.
Did I freeze? Sorry.
Yeah, you did, okay. Okay, so we got.
Leaving everyone in suspense.
Okay, so we got 6-0. Sam, you're not gonna be eligible to vote because you weren't at the meeting. Okay, okay, so 6-0. And so the board members choose to go down individually and sign it, or would you like to authorize me to just sign it?
Hold on, was everybody here at that meeting that just voted?
I wasn't. I didn't know.
Oh, good catch.
So, Rob, just abstain on that one, and it'll be 5-0-1.
Okay, so we, let's just go ahead and revote. So all those in favor of the finding of facts as amended. So we've got 5-0.
I guess it'd be 5-0-2.
Is it, um, so Sam and Rob weren't there, they're not really abstaining, are they? They weren't there?
No, they're at this meeting, and there's a vote.
This meeting, yes.
Okay, so it's 5-0-1, 2.
5-0-2.
5-0-2, Sam and Rob abstaining.
Yes.
Okay, would you want me to sign this, or would you like to go down individually?
I moved at the board chair, I'd be allowed to sign in the place of everyone signing.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, okay. 5-0-2, so the board chair will sign it on behalf. Okay, next, we're gonna go to the findings of fact conclusion of law regarding final subdivision for Granite Way subdivision located at 20 Granite Way, Rockport, Maine, and identified as MAP 26, lot 005, in the 907 zoning district. And the property is owned by Jonathan Boss. So you wanna pull that one up, Ryan?
I'll be there when you see it.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go through page by page again. And so on this one, we'll go ahead and add the board members again, present. You're typing, I hear, but we're not seeing anything. Is that something else? Okay. Okay, okay, I thought that was you. Okay, so we got a couple of comments on this one. I'm considering continuing the roadway. Jan, you wanna walk through your two comments?
Yes. In the second paragraph, town assessor had an issue with the subdivision for accidentally created an additional lot for the road. And I think a lot for the road is a little, is, is awkward, and that we should simply say an additional lot containing the road.
Okay, anybody have any problem with that?
Or consisting, or additional lot consisting of the roadway.
Okay, anyone have any problem with the proposed words there? See none, okay. Good, Jan, thank you. Next one.
And the second one in the last paragraph of this, of the overview, the word riding, I guess is a technical term. Something rides on the, is an easement riding on the deeds. I don't know that word. If that's, if that's a term, I'm fine. Otherwise, I just put it out because I don't know what it means.
All right.
I never heard of it.
Easement with the deeds, riding with the deeds in the deeds.
I just have added to, an easement added to the deeds.
Couldn't you say specified, Dan?
We can say specified, Dan. I mean, I've heard people say riding in the deeds, they specified it there, the surveyor who was there, he mentioned it, but added to the deeds. Is that what you said, Tom?
Yeah.
I said specified, but added, added to or written, written in the deed is either fine, all of those are fine.
Okay. Okay, so same comments, just on preparation there.
Again.
Okay. Okay. Down the scope of review.
Now, here's, here's another example of the word ride. If we, if we took it out of the first time, we should take it out this time also. So an easement that will be added to the deeds, as opposed to will ride with. And deed should not be, deed should be singular, not plural.
Okay, down the findings on that page.
Does this need to be addressed right here?
Yeah, where's that? That's up there. I don't care. I guess I'm okay either way with either of the words. Uh, I don't care. I guess I'm okay either way with either of the words.
I'm fine.
So you want the words in or?
No, I, no, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just marked off what struck me as awkward, but.
Yeah.
Satisfies. I, I, yeah, I think all of the changes are acceptable.
Um, and in the findings, that's where we'll stay right now. So for a conclusion, we have to make the statement of concludes. So that one board concludes, then it can go from there. But we do have to make.
Okay.
That the board concludes.
Then the board concludes. We don't have to write the vote. The board concludes that the revisions, um, are, are approved. Or however you wanna put it.
Okay. So you're gonna take out both of there? Yeah. Okay. Back to the original.
Okay. The board concludes that the revision to the previous.
Oops. Somehow we got back to.
I did because I'm getting confused on it. Um.
I don't like that wording.
Yeah.
You don't conclude to approve.
Right.
The board concludes, the board concludes, the revision to the previously approved site plan.
Yeah, that's the revision.
Be approved.
That the revision is approved.
When you, when, so Tom, can you, can you say again?
The board concludes that the revision to the previously approved site plan from the sixteenth of December, twenty twenty-two be approved.
Yes.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Final motion.
Orion, do you review these with the town attorney?
Yeah, he, he has access into everything and I send him a copy once we're done.
Okay. But yeah. I, I just, I repeat the, I think the, the interest that we have in knowing the distinction between the findings of facts and conclusions of law. Um, it would seem to me that findings of facts is like these, this is the evidence that we looked at and we conclude these are facts of the, of the case and the conclusion of law seems to be the summary of, um, we found that it is in keeping with the land use ordinance or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you've summarized like what that's supposed to be. So the, these are just weird ones because
Yeah.
the bulk of the content that's reviewed, that was already reviewed. And so like, and then with these, they're not gonna get appealed, but if they were, I didn't want to, uh, have us strip over ourselves on them because.
I'd be interested to know what his comments on our, on our, the way you're writing these is.
Yeah. Okay. So far, I mean, so far he hasn't, hasn't had an issue with it, but whenever there's a bigger project coming, yeah, he'll definitely be walking with me on the writings of it. So.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the finding of facts as amended for Granite Way subdivision?
I still move.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jan. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor that are eligible to vote? One, two, three, four, five, five, zero, two, to abstain. Okay. Um, and vote separately or for the, uh, chair to approve it? Orion? Yes. Need to vote separately?
Yes. Yeah. Y'all need to have another note.
Okay. Um.
I'd like to move that the, uh, the chair sign on behalf of the board.
I second that.
Okay. Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Five, zero, two. Okay. So I will sign these two documents. Okay. Um, so that is the business for tonight. We do have minutes also from last meeting.
Does anybody have anything to change in the minutes?
There's a few things.
I wrote up a style sheet at one time. But.
I tried in keeping with your style sheet.
Yeah. I just, you know, I just, I just think we should capitalize proper nouns and not capitalize common nouns. And once we make a decision on that, we should try to be consistent. So if we think the land use ordinance is a proper noun, and I think it is, then we should always capitalize it. If we think planning board is a proper noun, then we should always capitalize it, that kind of thing, you know?
I think, I, I think Tom's right. Yes. It's, it's, uh, it's, I think that would be um, the opinion of any of the style manuals that any of us used to write.
It just shows that we're erudite.
There you go. Can't spell that, but we are it.
Is Reagan still doing these? Orion? Or are you doing it? You're doing it.
I'm doing them.
Okay.
It looks like Orion's, Orion's got the job now.
Okay. Any, uh, okay. So that, uh, comment is taken and, uh, try to make sure we do that going forward. Any other, uh, questions or disagreement with the comments on page one? Oops. Sorry. Kind of flipped through there. Uh, okay. Any problem there? All right. Page two.
Joe, I have a general comment and that is that this level of detail is not required in minutes.
Correct.
All that's required is who attended, the time, the place, who attended and what decisions were made. That's all.
Yeah, this does have a little bit more detail than typically we have in the past.
It's, it certainly does. It has every question that was asked and, and so forth. And I don't, it's, it's not, it's terrific, but it's, it's a pain in the ass for whoever's taking minutes. And it just isn't necessary because we have findings and facts and that's what, and that's what matters. And we have video if we need to go back on anything. So, um, I think we could save Orion a reasonable amount of time. Um, and ourselves a reasonable amount of time in approving the minutes if we would simply stick with what was absolutely required and nothing more.
So to, to, um, I don't know what you're saying, Jen. Like, uh, I, I was working on the findings, facts. This right here was pretty much my boilerplate of writing everything down and then putting everything into the findings, facts. But yes, going forward, they will be a little more consolidated, but I didn't have the um, time to evaluate what I was gonna do because I was writing the findings, facts anyway.
Yes. I proposed we accept these with, uh, the additional detail this time.
Yep. Of course.
Write up. Yeah.
Of course. Of course.
Yeah.
My last problem was you didn't have enough time to write briefly.
I agree. I agree with Jan. I agree with Jan. But I'll tell you, if you read a set of such brusque minutes, you don't really get a flavor of what the meeting was about and you don't understand what some of the points of contention were.
Agreed.
Yeah. And I agree with that and also, and I think we ought to state broadly, maybe where some of the major areas of concern, but it doesn't need to be a detail every single question that was asked.
Good.
Is that reasonable?
Overall, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Yes. That's, that's a reasonable.
It is good to state the major points or major areas of concern. Don't have to go into all the details to support, you know, the outcome that's contained in the finding of facts.
Right.
All right. Um, under item three, there's one more typo. Uh, planning board is misspelled.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. Yeah.
Done.
Okay. Next page. Looks like mostly chromatical.
Well, just your type of, yeah.
Yeah. Um, let's see. Findings. Is something change of substance there? It's got lines there. Or is that just pagination or paragraph? Oh.
Not sure. Uh, well. John, John did a.
A new paragraph.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Um, motion except the minutes as proposed?
So moved.
As a modifier, modified, amended, amended. Okay. So move by Jan?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Um, let's see. Everyone that was at that meeting that's eligible to vote? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Five, zero, two. Approved. Okay. Um, so that's that. Uh, last thing I'd like to just talk a little bit more about, uh, housing workshop. Uh, we had our first housing workshop a couple of weeks ago. I think it was, um, some good speakers there. Uh, got some good information. The second of the series of three workshops here, what I'd like to do is spend time just looking and understanding exactly what our land use ordinance states and understanding in detail and how that impacts some of the things we heard. And then, uh, in the third meeting, we'll actually go through, propose and go through changes that we might make to the land use ordinance. So for the second workshop, Orion looked at the schedule for the library and I believe the fourteenth of September is open. Um, does that sound like a date that would work for everyone?
Tell you in a minute.
September fourteenth, I believe it's a Saturday or a Saturday, Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes. That's just fine with me.
All right. Good, good. I see no objections. So September fourteenth, September fourteenth, we'll plan on about two hours. Um, on the fourteenth. And again, I'll send out a, a letter, a note in advance of it. Uh, as some specific of sections of the land use ordinance, I'd like to make sure you take a look at pretty closely. I can tell you right now, the tables of nine, section nine hundred, uh, dimensional tables, uh, density tables, those are very important. Please look through those, um, in advance of this meeting so that you could come prepared to discuss.
Joe, could I, could I ask you what happened to, we were missing like two or three speakers at the last workshop. What happened there?
Uh, we were. We missed, uh, actually two people. Uh, one individual, um, uh, Tia Thompson, Tia Thompson, Tia Anderson. Um, is the director of, um, Habitat for Humanity, uh, the mid coast version here. And she notified me the morning before, uh, that she had a personal, um, emergency come up. And so she was not able to attend, but she did state that she was going to try to give us some written comments uh, regarding the land use ordinance. So that was, uh, Tia Anderson. Uh, Max McCool, Max was invited. Uh, Max was not able to attend that night. So that's the two that did not attend.
And he was a builder, right?
Yeah, Max has been pretty successful in building some, I'll call it workplace housing in the area. Uh, he's got a number of, uh, um, real estate properties around Rockport. So, uh, maybe we get Max to, uh, provide some input at some future date.
Yeah, that was too bad because I was wanting to hear from him.
Yes.
Okay. I'll talk to Max and see if maybe you can make it a, a different time here. So fourteenth, uh, it'll be looking in depth at our, uh, land use ordinance, uh, related to housing, housing density. Um, I did also ask Orion to, uh, um, give us some, uh, graphical detail like maps of where the current sewer, um, properties that are fronts.
Okay.
Uh, sizes of properties so that we don't, um, not trying to look at specific impacts on specific properties, but I'd like to look overall, uh, with changes that we might consider making, uh, what kind of impact that might have given the properties that exist. So that's it. Any other questions or comments on workshop?
Yeah, I have a comment that, that is, um, I, I can be at this, at the workshop, but I will not be around for the September planning board regular meeting. So I have to attend that meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that input.
Uh, September fourteenth, probably five thirty again.
Yes, it will be five thirty. In the library this time, I think.
Okay.
All right. So that's it on, uh, workshop. Any other business tonight? If you have anything else? Um, it's Sam is here. Uh, for those individuals that have not yet met Sam, let me just introduce, uh, Sam. Uh, new member to the planning board. Welcome, word Sam.
Hi. Sorry for getting here late.
Don't worry.
And, uh, look forward to seeing you at future meetings.
Yep.
Okay.
On time with the actual computer rig set up the right way.
All right.
And I can't believe Microsoft Teams actually worked.
Yeah, it did work pretty well.
I wouldn't say that out loud too often.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it.
You know, yeah.
All right.
It actually looks, looked pretty good. Yeah.
It does. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Scott, second.
Second.
Second is by Rob. Okay. All in favor? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six, six, zero, zero. Okay. So the meeting is adjourned at six, eighteen. Thank you everyone for coming. Uh, enjoy the rest of your month.
Great. Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
See y'all. Take care.
Bye, guys.